Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Shrewsbury zoning Board of Appeals meeting for October 28th. We have a very full agenda, so we're going to start with just some housekeeping items. I need review and sign a bill for $827.20 to the Community Advocate for the October 28th, 2024 legal notices. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. We do have two hearings right out front that will be withdrawn this evening, so if you're here to attend either the 288 Boston Turnpike hearing or the 34 Elma Circle hearing, they will not be being heard this evening. So first on our agenda is a request to withdraw without prejudice for the hearing of 288 Boston Turnpike, Lushun Lou for variance to Section 4D, excuse me, 7D, to provide fewer parking spaces than required by the bylaw. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve the withdrawal.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Next on the agenda, this is a request to withdraw without prejudice for the appeal of 34 Elma Circle. This is for variance to Section 4, Table 1, to convert a single-family dwelling with an in-law unit to a two-family dwelling. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve the request.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Alright, first hearing this evening, this is to hear the appeal of Tim Ivy of 16 Harbach Road, Sutton, Mass. for a variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 7C, Table 4, to build a pool 14 and 1/10 feet from the side yard setback where 20 feet is required upon property located at 83 Gold Street in the Residence A zoning District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 41, Plot 029002. If the appellant could please step forward?
Sit here.
And have a seat, sure. And if you could state your name for the record, please.
Yeah, Tim Ivy, Heritage Pools.
Wonderful. If you could let us know what you're looking to...
So, based on the scope of work that we're trying to do in the backyard, and the limitations with where the septic system was placed by the original builder of the home, it limits where we can put the pool. So, we did everything we could. I worked with Kevin over at Jarvis just to kind of figure out, you know, what's the best spot, and between the two of us, we came up with that. And with that in mind, it would put us at the, you know, about six feet into the side setback of the property.
Okay.
So the hard part would be moving the septic system, which is obviously a hardship on the homeowner, so we're hoping that we could put it in that spot and infringe on the setback to a small degree and do what we can at getting the homeowner in with a swimming pool.
Okay. Thank you for that information. Let's chat with the board before we open it up to public comments. Peter, any questions, comments?
Question, I guess, just to make sure I'm understanding. So the variance, the 10 feet is from the deck, the existing deck?
No, the variance would be from the side setback at 14.1 instead of 20.
Oh, from the side setback. Okay. Okay. And again, the main reason is the location of the septic system, otherwise you'd push it...
Yeah, otherwise, otherwise we could move it and get it within there. And I always try to keep at least a 10 with an extra foot buffer away from septic tanks, because you all know what can happen if you're not careful.
Right.
So that's, that was the reasoning for it.
Okay. And the septic system wasn't placed there by the current...
It was already in there, yeah.
Well, I think one of the justifications for variance is existing structures on the property, and I would think that an existing septic system would qualify for that. So I'm interested to hear what the rest of the board has to say.
Anne?
Yeah, I agree. I think the location of the septic system makes it very difficult to put the pool anyplace other than where you've proposed, so I think that's probably a good idea.
Thank you.
No, I was thinking the same, and even thinking if you could turn it 90 degrees, but I think you make the backyard setback infringement even worse than...
We break that by about 20 feet.
Yeah, then the side.
Makes it really difficult.
Was there any thought to making the pool shorter, or is it a standard design?
There was, but it gets away from, this is a fiberglass pool, so it's, it's only so many shells that are available, and this one needed to be eight feet in deep depth for the homeowner. So this was the smallest pool that they had to meet the eight-foot depth requirement, so.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think the 14 feet is bad, I was just wondering. Thank you.
David?
Is he on the plan around the septic, it calls for a barrier? Would you say that the terrain in that backyard is sloped at all?
It's very, it's sloped very little. It's actually pretty flat where the pool's gonna go, all the way probably back another 15, 20 feet.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's actually a pretty good spot, based on, and Kevin doesn't do a lot of job site meetings, but he did that for me on this one, because I was nervous about how we were gonna get this thing in, so.
Alright. Okay, great. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I hear a motion, please?
I move to approve a variance under Section 7C, Table 4, to build a pool 14 and 1/10 feet from the side yard setback where 20 feet is required at 83 Gold Street, Residence A District.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Following the pool schedule that we're on, the next hearing that we have is to hear the appeal of Diana Slaton of 7 Holman Heights Circle in Shrewsbury for a variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 6, 7, sorry, I'm having a hard time counting tonight, 7C, Table 3, to build a pool 7 and 9/10ths from the principal structure where 10 feet is required upon property located at 7 Holman Heights Circle in the Residence B1 zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 17, Plot 103004. If you could state your name for the record, please?
Good after, good evening, Madam Chairperson and the board. My name is Diana Slaton, and I'm the resident that owns the property at 7 Holman Heights Circle. This has been a labor of love with the planning department and the building inspector's office. Patty has worked collaboratively with me on this, and I just want to say for the record that she's been wonderful. We are seeking to put in a pool in our backyard, and the issue that we ran into with zoning is that there is an open space buffer, which the planning department has confirmed we cannot build in. So we, there's a 20-foot setback that we can't even apply for a variance for, because there can be no construction in that space. So that essentially is our main hardship for being able to put the pool within the appropriate set limits. The true variance that we're seeking is, and this was amended, so I'm not sure if the board has the appropriate amendment, but we're actually seeking a variance for the requirement in which a pool needs to be at least 10 feet from the principal dwelling. So rather than having it at 10 feet, it's supposed to be, it's gonna be about four and a half feet from the principal dwelling. Patty had a concern about someone jumping from the deck over to the pool. We discussed our safety planning with her. Our plan is to have an automatic cover that is obviously by code by my husband and I, so there would be an anticipation that there'd be supervision, signage, and an automatic cover to prevent that. And Patty seemed to be satisfied by that option, but essentially we do still need board approval to have the pool built closer. The only other alternative would be removing our deck altogether and simply putting stairs in, but the cost associated with that type of project is pretty exorbitant, especially in today's economy. So our hardship is kind of twofold, the open space buffer and also the financial hardship of having to reduce the size of the deck to accommodate the 10-foot space required. So we want to move it from 10 feet to four and a half feet approximately. That's the, that's the change we're seeking with our application. And I'm happy to answer any questions to the best of my ability.
Great, thank you. Peter?
Okay, so this is the pool one I was thinking of. The 4.4 feet is from the deck or from the house itself?
The deck.
Okay.
Yep.
So, similar, I think the case law in this for things, and it's a regular deck, it's not enclosed or three-season or anything like that, it's just...
It's a regular deck.
Just a deck.
Yes.
So I think we treat open structures like that, like decks, a little bit differently than we would from a house, I think typically, in this kind of situation. So I don't see that as a really substantial variance from the bylaw. I'd be inclined to support it.
Thank you.
But I'm interested to hear what the rest of the board has to say.
Yeah. So is the deck raised off the ground?
It is.
Okay. About how, how many feet?
I believe it's about six or eight feet. So there are like three or four steps on the side in order to access the deck from the yard, or to access the yard vice versa. It's about three or four steps down.
And is there a railing all around the deck except for where the stairs are?
Yes, and that will, the railing will remain in place. And it would take a great effort for someone to have to climb up onto the railing or over, and there's no ledge after the railing that someone could stand on to try to, I know the biggest concern we had was the jump into the pool. It's truly not possible unless they put a chair and a ladder or something to climb over the railing.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any other questions.
Can you talk us by, I'm just curious, did she define a deck as part of a principal dwelling?
She did. So she told me that the deck was part of the principal dwelling, which is why we had to apply for the variance.
Interesting. No, aligned with Peter, where open air decks...
Thank you.
...treat a little bit differently, so I'm inclined to support as well.
Thank you.
David?
Just wondering if any consideration was given to, I see just in the shape of the lot, and the way that the angle of the open space buffer is, if you were to, as I'm looking at the plan that you see here, shift the pool to the right, because then if you move that corner, you could get to a further distance than, than 4.4 feet. I'm just looking at kind of some of the background on the decision-making to putting the pool there as opposed to more on the eastern side of the property.
So I think the, the issue with the open space buffer, I agree that if we were to relocate the pool more towards the right, then that is something that would resolve the open space buffer issue, but we still have that same issue with respect to the space between the deck and the start of the pool. So the variance that we're seeking is not necessarily the open space buffer bottom half of the pool, it's the proximity to the deck, because it's a, it will run parallel to the deck, so whether we move it to the, to the right 10, 20, 30 feet or not, it's still going to be that same distance from the deck to the pool deck. And our, our pool person was concerned about the integrity of what's under the deck, and because of our basement, there were concerns going too close to the house. So we played with this a million different ways. This was the best possible option in order for us to do it.
Okay. No further questions.
Okay. I don't have any further questions myself. Alright, so public hearing, is there anybody that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve a variance under Section 7C, Table 3, to build a pool 4 and 4/10ths feet from the principal structure where 10 feet is required at 7 Holman Heights Circle in the Residence B1 District.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Alright. Next on the agenda is to hear the appeal of Steven Richardi, 148 Salisbury Street in Holden, for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 6, Table 1, to construct an in-law apartment upon property located at 40 Gold Street in the Residence A zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 41, Plot 029002. If you could state your name for the record, please?
My name is Steve Richardi, Richardi Builders.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. So, as I said, my name is Steve Richardi. I'm a general contractor. We're constructing a new home at 40 Gold Street for Two and Kai Nguyen, and they're two little boys. It's a two-story colonial two-car garage, typical for the neighborhood. On this type of house, normally above the two-car garage, you'd have like a family room. We're proposing to request a special permit to use that space to put an in-law apartment for Kai's parents. So, the footprint of the building, nothing would change, there's no like addition to it, we're just gonna use that space above the garage. Obviously, it's same situation. His parents are elderly, they don't drive, they don't work, they don't propose any threat or nuisance to the neighborhood in any way. And that's our proposal, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Peter?
How is it accessed? Does it have an outside access, or is it through the house?
So...
Just looking at the plans.
So because the land is a little slope, so what we're gonna do is, we're gonna go to the right side. You'd, there'd be like a parking space to the right of the house, and then you'd, there'd be stairs up, and there's an entrance in the back.
Okay.
And then there's also an entrance through the garage to the basement that...
I see.
I mean, they'd all be, they'd all be able to access it.
Right. Okay. Okay, no questions from me beyond that.
Anne?
So, just so I'm clear on the plans, the garage is under, and the proposed in-law is on top of that, but it's like...
Yeah, so the garage, typically, they're all different, but sometimes you pull in this, in the second floors meet up, and a lot of people use that. This one is a garage on the, the first floors lineup, so that the, the parents are on the same floor as the first floor, so there's limited walking for them, and they can, you know, move about. On this particular plan, that's how it's set up, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin?
I don't have any questions.
David?
No questions.
Okay. The only question I'm more curious, what's the size, square footage-wise?
So the, it's just above the garage, 20, 12, 24, so off the top of my head, six and a quarter, six, six, I'm guessing, but 625 square feet roughly.
Okay. Alright, yeah, I don't have any further questions. Alright, is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay, can I get a motion to...
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Because typically, I think with in-laws, we do see them accessed through conditioned space.
With the sunset with family member? Is that what you're...
Right. And I guess this just was not caught during the application process, since, and usually it is through conditioned space, and since a garage isn't conditioned, I...
So you can access...
The heated space, the access.
You can access the house from the back, through the back door, and you can go from the in-law...
Yep.
To the, you'll go, you'd be walking into the kitchen.
Okay, okay.
Because the first floors lineup, you'd actually walk into the kitchen.
Perfect, okay.
The garage unheated space is just if they come home.
But that is also, okay.
Right, they pull in, they can access the house without getting out in the rain and stuff.
If I am reading the plan correctly, there is a case opening between...
Perfect.
The two.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah, 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 exactly, yes, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, heated, right.
Right.
Okay.
And yes, and thank you for that. It is, an in-law is truly for a family member, and whenever the family decides to sell, it, this special permit will sunset with...
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Okay. Alright. Alright, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so moved. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve a special permit under Section 6, Table 1, to construct an in-law apartment at 40 Gold Street in the Residence A District.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Yep.
Alright, next hearing is to hear the appeal of Stephen Zindel of 135 Howell Street, Marlborough, for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 7B, Table 2, to construct a deck 34 and 2/10ths feet from the rear yard where 40 feet is required on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling upon property located at 5 Ravelli Street in the Residence A zoning District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 40, Plot 044000. If you could state your name for the record, please?
Stefan Zindel.
Good evening, and if you could tell us a little bit about what you're here for?
We'd like to build a new deck for the Ortegas. They originally had a deck that was rotted and needed to be removed for the safety of their family and just everybody around. So they took the deck down, what was it, about two years ago? About two years ago, they took the deck down. And at the time, the deck was already non-conforming. It was 13 feet. They didn't know that if they took it down when they went to build in the future, that we would have to apply for a special permit, because originally we were gonna make it the same exact size, but then when we, when we applied for the permit, Alex said, "You're over the setback." But it was gonna be the same size that was there. But because it was removed, because it was dangerous, here we are. And now that we have to apply for this permit, even if we build it the same size they had, we decided to build it a little bigger. And we do have a couple of letters from neighbors that are in favor of the project.
Do we have those in our drive, or those, that new information?
I don't think I have them.
Do you have enough copies for the board?
No, I just have one copy. I have the two letters, a copy of each.
Okay, so if you'd like to bring up here, we have to keep it for our records?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You start down there and bring it around here. Excuse us for one minute.
Did you describe how much bigger this deck was than the existing?
Yeah, the original, see, originally, it was marked as like 10 feet, but the footing, the existing footings now are at 12'6, so there was no way you could have a 10-foot deck with 12'6 footing. So the original deck was 13 feet. We would like to build it 16 feet.
And the 20 feet is the same?
The, no, the 20 feet is longer, but the 20 feet has nothing to do with the setback.
Sure, okay, fair enough.
Anne, questions, comments?
Um, no, I don't have any questions.
Nope, I'm good, too.
David?
Yeah, no questions.
Alright, thank you for these. Alright, let's see if there's anyone that wishes to be heard. Alright, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve a special permit under Section 7B, Table 2, to construct a deck 34 and 2/10ths feet from the rear yard where 40 feet is required on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling at 5 Ravelli Street in the Residence A District.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, this is to hear the appeal of David Rhonda, 35 Lyman Street, Northborough, for two special permits to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 7E 5A and Section 7E 2A, to remove and replace a pre-existing non-conforming sign, five sign, within the required setback to the property line and to exceed the allowed 20 square feet for a sign in the apartment zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 36, Plot 060000. Could I ask you to state your name for the record, please?
Yes, good evening. My name is Bart Steele. I'm with Viewpoint Sign and Honing in Northborough, Mass. And also here this evening is...
Stacy Hale, property manager at Shrewsbury Commons.
Thank you. We have two hearings here before you this evening.
Yeah, we're gonna take one at a time.
Yep, we're gonna take them one at a time, but I just, I mentioned that to the board because they're, they are mostly identical, and they basically mirror each other on the different sides of the entrance. And the reason for that is because it's on two separate lots. So normally, it would have been on one application. I know you said you had a long agenda this evening, so I didn't know how much, you have a packet there, and I didn't know how much you wanted me to read this, but basically what we're, basically what we're looking to do is to take the existing, the pre-existing non-conforming sign, which is 104 square feet, and replace it with a much smaller 35-square-foot sign, 34.5-square-foot sign. And the setback's gonna be within the, so we're seeking two, two special permits, one for the size of the, the square footage of the sign, and one for the setback. We reviewed these with the building inspector, and, you know, it was her recommendation because of the locations of the sign and so forth that we come before you. I have much more information I can give you on the, but, you know, the signs themselves, I think you have in your packet there. The new signs are gonna be three-foot high, 36 inches high, by 144 inches wide. They're gonna be all aluminum construction. The individual, the copy on them are gonna be individual acrylic letters, and this, this new design echoes what Corcoran is doing through most of their properties now. They're trying to get all of the signage in line so that when you're in Andover, whether you're in Shrewsbury, whether you're in Wellesley, you know, people will recognize it as a Corcoran property. You'll, you know, you'll note that the, the pre-existing non-conforming sides are much larger, and...
An eyesore.
Yeah, and they're, and they're in need of repair, and so, the thing is, that the reason they've kept them up is because they're pre-existing, they're non-conforming, and now it's time to give it a new look, and it just seems, so, you know, they compromised obviously on the signs, they made it much, much less. It's, it's, fits in better with what they're trying to accomplish there. The packet has all of the information regarding the setbacks and the renderings and the drawings, et cetera, and I can read a little bit more if you'd like, or if you have any questions. It's basically the two permits, the square footage and the setback.
Okay. Yeah, we have a very hearty package here, so I appreciate that. Questions? Peter?
Not really. I appreciate that the signs are smaller. I understand the reasons why they need to be close to the road based on where they are. I see it overall as an improvement. I don't think it derogates from the intentions of the bylaw. I think it's fine. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anne?
I agree with Peter.
Okay.
Same.
Yep, they're going to the same location, and it's a smaller sign, so I agree with Peter.
Yeah, they're, they're basically in the same spot. One of them, we're moving, actually moving back, so that it becomes more conforming. And again, that information's in, in one of the, one of the pages there, at the, in the packet, to bring it up here. So, we're actually, but they're basically on the same spot. If not, if anything, they're further back. One of them's further back.
Even better.
Well, I want to thank you, because those signs drive me up a wall. So I appreciate that you're bringing them up to...
They're 50 years old.
I know.
Are they, really?
I see them every day, all day.
And I thank you for not making me read this, this package. As you can see, it's quite extensive, and I'm sure you've had a chance to look at it.
Very hearty, yeah. I don't think there's any question those signs need to, to be fixed in the fact that they're, I think...
And I too would like to echo the sentiment of the building inspectors. Patty's been working closely with Lauren on this project, and, you know, we'll be coming for you again next month regarding the Route 20 sign. But that's, we still have to work out the setbacks and all of that. But for night, for right now, I guess we're talking about 22, 25-55.
No, we're also talking about...
Yeah, we have 18, too.
We also have 18.
Yep. So, if, by, to, to, if you want to vote on these separately, or...
So, I, they're separate on the agenda, so we're gonna...
Yes.
Go on, we'll, we'll get this one taken care of, and then we'll move on to this.
Okay, great.
Okay, and I'm sure we'll have probably the same conversation.
Thank you.
Alright, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to chat about it? Alright, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve two special permits under Sections 7E 5A and 7E 2A, to remove and replace a pre-existing non-conforming sign within the required setback and to exceed the 20 square feet allowed for a sign in the apartment zoning district at 22 through 55 Commons Drive in the apartment zoning district.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Wonderful. Okay. So the next hearing is to hear the appeal of 18 Commons Drive, David Rhonda, 35 Lyman Street, for two special permits to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 7E 5A and Section 7E 2A, to remove and replace a pre-existing non-conforming sign 5 feet from the property line where 12 and, 12.5 feet is required, and to exceed the allowed 20 square feet for a sign in the apartment zoning district upon property located at 18 Commons Drive in the apartment zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 36, Plot 036000. Hello again.
Hello. Again, for the record, my name is Bart Steele from Viewpoint Sign and Honing, and Stacy Hale from Corcoran. The application mirrors the, the previous location, 18, is on the opposite side of the driveway, separate lot. Same deal, we're gonna remove the lodge pre-existing non-conforming sign with your permission and replace it with the sign that you have in your packet. It's gonna be identical to the sign... It's gonna be identical to the sign that you just approved on the other side of the driveway. And, um, you know, it's gonna be in harmony with what I think everybody's trying to accomplish, and we look for your approval.
Okay. Great. Peter?
Nothing from me, thank you.
Anne?
Nothing from me.
Kevin?
Nope, I don't have anything either.
Okay, David?
Same.
Alright, it's your lucky day.
Thank you very much.
Hang on.
And I'll just want, just for the record, I did, um, speak with Lauren about it, and I asked for, um, 'cause this parcel, um, specifically, there's nothing built on it, and it is under a conservation restriction with, um, Shrewsbury Commons. But I did ask for a few documents, and got the conservation restriction and read it. And there, you know, nothing's, can be built, you know, housing, but, um, signage for, um, the property is allowed within that conservation restriction, so.
Great.
And I do have a copy of that, if you need it.
That's in our packet.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, it's a public hearing. Anyone wish to be heard? Alright, can I get a motion to adjourn the public hearing, please?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Wait, we gotta, we gotta do a substantive motion this time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I move to approve two special permits under sections seven E five A and seven E two A, to remove and replace a pre-existing non-conforming sign, five feet from the property line, when twelve feet and five tenths feet is required, and to exceed the twenty square feet allowed for a sign in the apartment zoning district at Eighteen Commons Drive, Apartment Zoning District.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, um, this is for Thirteen Fifth Ave. This is to hear the appeal of Nicholas Consomagno of Thirteen Fifth Ave, Shrewsbury, for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, section four B and section seven, table two, to extend a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot and create a new non-conformity in the front yard setback in the Residence B two zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate thirty-one, plot zero one eight zero zero zero. If you could state your name for the record, please.
Nicholas Consomagno, and well done on the pronunciation.
Thank you. I practiced that.
And this is Jessica Consomagno, my wife. Good evening, chairperson and, and board. We're seeking approval to build an addition on our existing non-conforming single-family house, uh, located on a double-lawn zoning district, RB two. Currently, our house is non-conforming to front setback, rear setback, and minimum lot size bylaws, uh, for the zoning district. The proposed addition would consist of an eighteen-foot-by-twenty-four-foot family room, a fourteen-foot-by-twenty-six-foot attached garage, and a fourteen-foot-by-twenty-six-foot unfinished and unheated storage room above the garage. Due to the current location of our house on the lot, as well as the triangular shape of our lot, um, that narrows as you approach Fifth Avenue, um, building our lot is extremely difficult following today's setback bylaws, um, which I believe has been acknowledged in past board meetings by, uh, by the board, um, for many lots that are along Lake Quinsigamint. Our proposal, um, would have a front setback of eight feet, so it wouldn't encroach any closer to the current five-point-three-foot setback. Our rear yard setback would be thirty-point-four feet, um, which encroaches nine feet closer than the current setback. Building off the backside of the house wouldn't be feasible, um, due to the topography behind our house. And if we attempted to, we would still be within the forty-foot, um, rear setback minimum for our district. We feel that our current proposal does its best to acknowledge the nature of the bylaws, and it would be, it would not be a detriment to the neighborhood. Each neighbor that we've spoken to about our plans has been in support, and none have voiced any concerns. Thanks for listening and for your time. Happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Well done. Thank you.
Thanks.
Peter?
So I, it's a little bit hard for me to make out, um, so when we, when we do variances, there's a few different things that, um, or is this just a special permit, actually? Okay.
Well, it's all pre-existing non-conforming.
Right, right, right. Can you just explain, you mentioned the topography, the hillside, being something that's an impediment to growth? If you could just sort of talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, if you see on the left side, um, there's a hill, there's a wall behind our house, and then there's a hill that's a slight incline before you reach our neighbor's property, which you can see your house in the top-left corner. So if we were gonna build behind the house, we would have to, it would be costly to have to-
Build into the hill, essentially.
Into the hill, and then we would still be, um, non-conforming, 'cause we'd be within the forty-feet setback.
Okay, now that's helpful. It's just hard to sort of figure out how that all fits together. That, that's my only question. Thank you.
Anne?
I don't have any questions. I think it is a really tricky lot. And I assume you've considered all the other places it possibly could be.
Yeah, I mean, it's the location of where the house is now, and how narrow the lot is as you're building that way. We wouldn't be able to build to the left, because we'd be building closer to Lake Quinsigamint, we'd be within the hundred-foot buffer. So we'd have to build on the side of the lot, and there's no way of doing it without encroaching on the setbacks.
Okay, thanks.
Kevin?
No, I don't have anything else. Knowing the layout of the yard, um, I wish I had seen that on, um, the plot plan here, but the way you've described it makes so much more sense now. So I understand why you've laid it out the way you have, 'cause I was gonna suggest moving the garage back, but see, that's relatively impossible without really, um, changing the topography of the lot.
David?
Uh, more of a question for Louise. The, the pre-existing non-conforming nature of the property precludes us from really looking at the, the side and front and rear setbacks? Is that how, exactly how that works?
Doesn't preclude, um, but I think if it were going any closer than five-point-three, that's when it would've been encroaching in, like, the variance.
Yep.
So, I think, yeah, I mean, I think you definitely can, because it is pre-existing non-conforming, you know, itself, but, um, I think that also kind of lends the lot and the topography of being a little tricky for them to-
Yeah, I, I agree with your argument about the, the lot and the topography. It's just I get a little nervous when there's so many variances requested. I think in this situation, it is special, uh, to, special enough, I should say, to, uh, to approve, so.
And it's a special permit, not a variance?
A special permit, right.
Yeah.
Just to confirm, you don't, or, I'm sorry, did I?
No, I'm all done.
You're all done, okay. It's a hundred and twelve feet from the shoreline, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. I think, I mean, Fifth Ave is just notorious for difficult lots to begin with, so- I applaud your desire to be creative with, um, putting something nice in there. So I, I really don't have, uh, the comment would be, I think you did a good job planning it, so.
Appreciate it.
Alright, Louise, anything else? Okay. Public hearing? Anybody wish to be heard? Okay. We are going to ask for a closure of the public hearing, please.
Move to close the public hearing?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
Yeah, I think it's the hill, there's just nowhere to go, so I understand. So I move to approve a special permit under section four B and section seven, table one, to extend a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot and create a new non-conformity in the front yard setback at Thirteen Fifth Avenue Row, Residence B two. That's all.
Great. You stand a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Congratulations. Start building. Alright. Second to last on our agenda. This is to hear the appeal of Michelle Kraus, twenty-four Floral Street, Shrewsbury, Mass, for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, section six, table one, to allow for the keeping of animals other than customary household pets in a parcel less than five acres upon property located at twenty-four Floral Street in the Residence A zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate twenty-nine, plot zero six eight zero zero zero. If you could state your name for the record, please.
Michelle Kraus. And this is my husband, David Kraus.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, welcome back.
Yes.
Been six months since we've seen you.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, do we have any updates?
Played good.
I mean, things are going well. My husband has installed, or put up further hog panels around our yard to secure our yard even further. And, yeah, I think things have been going fairly well.
It's been all upward trajectory in terms of just investments, 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 and it's been a lot of fun, and incorporating the neighbors more into it as well, too. You know, far more neighborhood engagement. You know, a lot of kids come over, you know, opportunities, so.
Sorry, it was just, is this in the, um?
No, it just came in this afternoon, so that's why I printed it out.
Excuse me for one minute, I just need to circulate this.
Got it right now.
So to refresh our memory, you were in front of us six months ago. And take us back in time, if you wouldn't mind, um, to the original reason that you were in front of us.
So- We were applying for a special permit to keep, um, goats and pigs in our, um, as our pets in our yard, but we have less than five acres.
And wasn't there an issue with animals escaping?
There was an issue with the pigs escaping. It happened to happen, to occur right before we had come to the board. And-
Which is why, yeah.
That's why it was only permitted for six months. They were secured. We continue to work out there. My husband's out there every single day, working on fencing, improving things. It is continuing to be a learning process, but we have learned a lot and have made continuous improvements.
Okay. Alright, let's have some chats. Peter?
Sure. So, you know, no surprise to you guys. I think the big concern here is the pigs getting loose and other animals getting loose. It sounds like you're making a lot of investments, which I think is great, to ensure that doesn't happen. I, I think what you're doing is great. I think it's, um, I think it's a really interesting, and, and I think it's something that I'd like to see adopted, you know, more broadly. I'm all in favor. I work in environmental stuff and agriculture, and I think it's wonderful to keep animals. But I think it is important to make sure that you're keeping them in where they need to be. So I would be open to allowing the permit, but I think, you know, in terms of the amount of time, I think just to make sure that these issues are being addressed at a regular interval, if the board is open to it, to have a not particularly long extension of time, so that we can check in periodically and just kind of keep an eye on things and make sure that every, the neighbors are happy and everybody's happy.
Yeah.
Open-door policy, so.
Yeah.
So that's, that's sort of where my head's at, but I'm interested to hear what the rest of the board has to say.
Anne?
So, um, there are a couple of incident reports in the file from the Shrewsbury Police. One is dated, um, August thirtieth. The two pigs got out, and the other is dated September seventeenth. The two pigs got out, um, or one pig, anyways, a pig got out. There's also some other concerns that are expressed, um, from neighbors. So can you tell me a little bit about what's been going on over the last two months and what happened?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I take the pigs for walks back there, you know, I have a leash for them. And oftentimes, I'll be back there with them, and they'll get the acorns, or, you know, take them up and down. There's an old track that runs in the back of my property that I've constantly, I've walked with them and my animals. You know, oftentimes, I feel, I, I'm out there with them, you know, under supervision. But if anything like that had happened, it was unbeknownst to me. You know, sitting here, because there was no report put on the desk, there was nothing handed to me.
Yeah, so, um, I, we didn't, we don't have any of these reports. There was one day that I had, um, pulled in the driveway from work, and, um, the animal control officer had just walked them back. And I had a great conversation with him, and he was like, "I don't even know how they got out, but they followed me right back to where they were supposed to be." We have, and since that time, um, since Keith came over, we, he's put in more fencing. So now there's the enclosure for the pigs, and then another, uh, hog panels all across the back of our property. So what was happening was that we just had, um, it's not chicken fencing, but it's kind of similar to chicken fencing, where it's a little bit softer, more pliable, and they could burrow underneath it, and that was what was along the back of the property. So now it's, um, steel-grade, almost like cattle paneling across the back of it, in addition to that paneling around their enclosure. So it's doubly enclosed now. And we've also installed cameras, so we check in and watch them throughout the day when we're both at work.
My students watch them. You know, I'm a Worcester schoolteacher, you know, and I have these videos all the time in my room, and I get to show the kids the goats, I get to show the kids the pigs, get them to talk to them. We even had a snack dispenser at one point that didn't work too well, but, you know, we tried all these different things to incorporate them. The pigs are miniatures, so they're Juliana hogs, which means they only get up to about seventy pounds. So the animal we're talking here is like a small dog, if that. Uh, and very friendly to people, and, you know, will come up to, especially a man with a beard, you know, like that. So anything like that, you know, very friendly. You know, so the one thing I want to paint as well is that the animals themselves have all been, you know, groomed far more as a, a friendly animal. They don't, you know, run away, they're, you know, come up and touch you, and they want to-
Her two-year-old feeds them from his hand. They're very friendly.
Yeah. And so even the pigs, I mean, um, the goats, which we've had no issues with, are all Nigerian dwarf goats. So, you know, by breed-
Her dog is bigger than the goats.
And probably more problems.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin?
Um, I guess my only questions are if the animals, or any animals, are still escaping. Is there anything further that can be done? It sounds like, based on what you're describing to us, there's, you've made improvements and continue to make improvements, but is there still more to do?
We've electrified it. That's a new thing, where we've just recently kind of gauged away from solar power, 'cause, you know, with solar power, sometimes you get limited light, and the zaps don't come. To, you know, I've had my property pretty much from start to finish now completely. You know, knowing the school next door as well, keeping respects to everything. You know, we're at a point now where, you know, it's lockdown. I've lived at that property for eighteen years, you know, and what I've been able to do to it over the past four years especially, with the, the gardening turning into what we've done. I mean, it's, it's a lockdown facility at this point, between the cameras and, you know, nothing can get out, I mean, and I'm more than willing, um, you know, to have anybody come over and see. You know, I know, uh, I'm always due for an inspection this month. I've always set my inspections up. So if it's a matter of coming over and seeing my facility or anything of the sorts, I'm, I'm very open to that. You can even look at our Facebook page, Big Book Acer, which I spell acre wrong, but-
But, um, and Officer Eames has been to our property, and says that the setup that we have, because they have to do a yearly reporting with the state, and he's always been impressed with the care of the animals that we provide and the setup that we have for them. He's always complimented us and have had very pleasant communication with him.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's any doubt about the care. You guys seem very, um, nurturing towards the animals, based on what you describe. I guess what we're trying to avoid is the almost once a month, police being called to wrangle somebody up, whether they're friendly or not, which is awesome.
No, I, I hear what you're saying. I don't think it's almost month, once a month. If it was August thirtieth and September seventeenth from April, that's a pretty big jump. that's a pretty big jump and, um, he's a school teacher, I'm a school nurse, we were home all summer, and seeing them all summer also, and so when we went back to work in August and September, they were being a little bit more adventurous and trying to look for company and attention, and I think that was part of the issue as well, which is since then, um, that he's secured the fencing in the back, that was not there before.
And they've been neutered.
That's all I have.
Uh, the, the officer that you mentioned, that the, uh.
He's the animal control officer.
Okay. Um, I don't have any questions for you, I'm in line with, um, I think what Peter said about having a, a recurring, or a relatively shorter term, uh, timeline to see you guys again, just to ensure that everything is going okay.
So, um, I mean, the fact that your house is next to a daycare center really adds a whole other dimension in my mind to the whole thing, and I can tell you guys are passionate about your animals. And, um, for the record, I think pigs are absolutely adorable, and there was a family in Shrewsbury that had a few pigs and during COVID, I spent a lot of time bringing scraps of food to the pigs, so I, they're endearing to me. That being said, I am really concerned about the fact that they are getting out and they are apparently traveling over to your neighbors, which is a daycare center. And as I stated in the last hearing, that's my concern, I will not be able to live with myself if, God forbid, even without any intention of hurting a child, a child gets hurt because of this. And it is concerning to me that we have, you know, repeated police reports on this. We want to see you win, we, uh, you can, I can tell you, you're really passionate about this. My perspective is, um, we have to keep a short leash on you as, as pet owners, I think at this point. Um, we had you, you know, six months, and here we are and we have more, you know, it's like, how many times do we give you an option to come back? And the same behaviors are happening over and over again. So I am concerned about that myself. I, and we're reading through some of the comments from abutters who do have concerns. Um, so I would just state, I just, I would not be able to grant this without putting some timing on it to have you come back again. And next time, I really, if I'm s- sitting in this place, would not want to see any police reports, because if we do, I, at that point, it's going to be, for me personally, and I'm aboard five people, I couldn't, I couldn't ask, I could, I would not approve of the appeal, so that's my opinion, so.
I wonder if I could just add too, from the sort of legal perspective for context, our power to grant you this permit is based on our collective judgment that what you're asking to do won't create, um, and that the language is in the application, won't create a nuisance, um, won't be detrimental to the neighborhood. And so, you know, animals getting loose is one of these things that is technically a nuisance and could be seen as being detrimental to the neighborhood. I grew up on the property next to where Weagle Farm used to be, baby cows used to get out, you'd have to bring them back, these are things that happen. Um, but I think the board's concern, and I imagine the neighbors' concern, is the frequency. And so if there, whatever you can do, and it sounds like you're doing it already, to just keep that frequency down and get it as close to zero as possible, I think that that's, you know, as, as Mayor Betts says, the chair says, we want to see you succeed on this, but there is, because of our duty to the public, there's a limit to how many times we can, we can do it.
And I understand what you're saying, and for what it's worth, um, you know, I think the neighbor that has the biggest issue with it is my stepsister, who runs the school. You know, so I think in a lot of ways.
The owner, the owner of the preschool?
Yes.
Right.
So my stepfather owns the building, she runs the school, and we've always.
It's a complicated family dynamic because his stepfather is in support of it and he's the owner of the school. His daughter runs the school and she is not in support of it.
So I think sometimes whether it's exasperated or not, I'm not here to, to judge that. I know that at the, the drop of a hat, it would be a call of anything, even if it was a dog back there. You know, not to say mine happened twice, I'm just saying if there was a chance, you know, to run me over on this one, I would.
So, I would say that I know families that are, that have children at the daycare center. And I have had unsolicited texts from people saying the animals are out again.
Yeah.
So I don't know, whatever the family background and history is, obviously, there's a history. Um, but again, we're he, we have to protect the public, so forget about family dynamics, it's the kids.
Without a doubt, our son's there too.
So there you go.
We're children, we're children.
And you're a teacher, so obviously, this is your livelihood, so.
The teacher of a school nurse, like, we are making our livelihood of taking care of children.
Right, but you can imagine the position that we're in, we're here to, you know, institute safety for other people that are not here. So this is a tough one, because we, I, I think to echo what Peter said, it's great, let, you know, educationally, it's a wonderful thing. It sounds like there's a lot of really good components about this. I would propose that we have you come back, um, I'm even going to say three months, but I might just be by myself on that. Um, but again, I just want to be clear, if it's three months and there's three police reports, then I'm going to be really concerned at that point.
More than fair.
Um, and just for the record, and I apologize, I hadn't had time to send forward this email to you, um, but it will be, you know, either tonight or tomorrow, but it was, um, Melissa who emailed this afternoon, just about the property, just so you're aware.
Makes sense.
For the record, and I will.
All of our other neighbors are very supportive and.
Well, you're also in a unique position that you're on the corner, you don't have, really, it's the, um, South Street garage that's behind you, I believe, right? So, you know, there really isn't, are no other neighbors.
Yeah.
Across the street are all very supportive and ha, um, kind, and then at the end of, so, behind our property, there's that path that goes all the way to Fruit Street, and the man who lives at the end of Fruit Street walks that path and he's always very supportive and happy and when he walks the path, checks in, says hi, so it's another neighbor who loves it, yeah.
I want to say for the record, our neighbors are amazing on this and have been since the get-go and, you know, I've done a little bribery with eggs and garden stuff, but besides that, it's, they have really come to my aid and, you know,
Maybe they can stand guard over your pigs and not let them out.
See, like, it takes a village.
Yeah, yeah, that's true, does. All right, well, um, I think we move to the, if there's anyone that wishes to be heard. Do not think there's anyone that wishes to be heard, I think we've heard from everyone that needs to be heard. Um, so I can get a motion to, um, close the public hearing, please.
I move to close the public hearing?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. So I request a condition.
Yeah, so for the board for conversation, I guess, I, I'm, I'm okay with issuing a permit for a limited period of time and having kind of folks come back and check in. Um, I'm open to three months, I'm open to six months, but I'm interested to hear what people think.
I feel the same way.
Three?
Three. I don't know if it's weather dependent, I mean, do they get?
Three's fine, they're going to be less moving in the winter than the summer anyway, but I would do three, I would do whatever, you know, is necessary.
Let's do three.
Three?
I'm more inclined for the six, because if, at that point, it's a six and if it was an issue, then it's essentially the last time I'd be.
When and done.
Hearing it.
Oh, so you're saying if you give them a longer period of time.
It's also, it will be the winter, so it will be easier for them to be, because I don't want to do three months and then do another three months after that, and be, because it'll be, we're in October, so we would be seeing them in, uh, yeah, in May for six.
Time to take it out, probably.
Like January, if we were to see them in three.
That's fair. That's a good rationale.
Could also split the difference.
Well, we could do that too. February is.
Yeah, you're right, it's going to be right in the middle of winter, so you're not going to, um, I'm, I'm open to, I'm open to six on that basis, but.
Yeah, I think, I, I'm convinced that six might be a better option.
Just mimic the decision from April then?
Until April.
Yeah.
Six months.
All right.
Okay.
Let's give it a whirl.
Right.
So I move to approve the renewal of a special permit under section six, table one, to allow for the keeping of animals other than customary household pets on a parcel less than five acres for six months at twenty-four Floral Street in the Residence A District.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
I appreciate it.
Happy.
Hopefully six months from now, everything.
Yes, we don't want to see you back, well, we will see you back, but.
Yeah, flee the jurisdiction.
Right, thank you. All right, last up. Thank you for your patience. The final hearing is tonight, is to hear the appeal of Renee Van Beacom of ten School Street in Shrewsbury for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, section four B, to an extend a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot and a variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, section six, seven, table two, to create a new non-conformity in the side yard setback upon property located at ten School Street in the Residence B one zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate twenty-three, plot one, zero, four, zero, zero, zero. Welcome, if you could state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, everybody, so I'm Brennan Van Beacom, this is my wife.
Renee Van Beacom.
And our, um, our hardships right now are topography and our septic.
What, uh, tell us what you're doing.
Uh, so we're putting an addition on our existing house, so we're trying to add, um, more living space, we're trying to, um, build a family, we already have one son, two years old, so, um, we're trying to get a little more living space and another bedroom to, once again, expand our family. Um, we would like to have more children down the road, and right now we just have a two-bedroom house, so we're liking to gain that a little bit more extra space to expand our family a little more.
And then the garage is also going to be put, um, next the addition, um, so we also have, um, pictures of the existing, um, so I have pictures of.
If you give us these pictures, we have to keep them.
That's fine.
It's fine.
Um, of what our parking is like now.
Yes.
We have four or five copies. Um, so this is what the, our current parking is, so the garage is going to be stepped back more so that there will be, um, our car will be parked so close to the road.
Yeah, so we're basically right on the street right now, and it's, being it such a busy street, it's very dangerous for us to even back into our driveway right now because everyone is just zooming right by and. It's a, it's kind of on a hill too, so like you can't see coming over towards where we park right now, so. It's already been some kind of close calls, just coming from that.
Yep, and School Street's not a, on busy street with the park.
With the park being right there and everybody walking.
Do you mind if I say something? I'm the general contractor.
Sorry, this is our.
Sure, welcome, if you could state your name for the record, please.
Kenneth Wilson, so the, the septic system is also right in front of the proposed, um, family room. So that's obviously a hardship, and we don't want to spend the money on moving that as well, so.
Right.
So just to be clear, in front of the proposed addition, where it's eleven feet five and eight feet, right in front of that little square is where the septic is?
Yeah, there was an updated plan that was submitted, um, the latest plan, I don't know if you guys have it here, but, um, we did have Jarvis redo it, um, to put in the two septic tanks, the existing septic tanks. It was submitted to our.
Show where the two septic covers are and the, um.
Yeah, so where it says proposed addition, it's right in front of that.
Yes.
And then I also have a letter from, um, the residents that will be encroaching on, um, with the proposed garage. They also, um, wrote a letter, um, just stating that they are supporting of this as well.
If you would like us to have it and read it, that would be great.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's a good.
Thank you.
That's the one right there.
Okay, and just to be clear, this is the house, if you're looking straight on to the left?
Correct, the driveway, it's their driveway, and they're also stepped back further.
Yes.
Okay.
The left of the garage.
Right. All right, Peter, questions?
Sure, um, so I, I think that the, you mentioned topography, I think the shape of the lot is also a criteria we can use for variance and the, the placement of existing structures, so the house is where it is, the septic tanks are where they are. So you have a relatively limited area in which you can move. I think one question I have is on the garage, and this is for the general contractor, I suppose. I don't suppose there's any way to make it just enough smaller to avoid that new, um, side yard setback issue?
Um, so it's, right now it's twenty-four by twenty-four, so we could go to twenty-two?
You lose the two feet and you'd be.
Width-wise?
Right on the bubble.
So you'd be at, like, right at the buffer.
And so what would the downsides of that be from, like, the experience of the folks who live there?
I guess.
Um, I mean, two cars close together.
They'd be close together.
Banging doors.
So we have three vehicles right now, so we're trying to keep two vehicles in the garage.
And then one in the.
And then one out.
Yeah.
Instead of having three vehicles outside, two vehicles out.
Especially with the winter, and I'm hoping to have more kids, to have kids cleaning my car off, it's just, we have been doing that for thirty-three years that I've lived next to ten School Street, at eight School Street, and, I mean, it's just now adding a whole layer of complexity with he's leaving in the morning, I have to clean off cars to have kids. It's just easier.
Sure.
And just being that close to the road too, so it'd be easier to just have one out instead of having two or three out.
Yeah, so you'd really only have two feet on either side of ea, of each car.
Yeah, which is pretty.
Two feet, the car, two feet, the car, two feet.
Right.
It's not really, it's pretty close.
Okay, no, that's helpful, because I think for me, seven point eight versus ten feet is, is a pretty small amount of relief, um, to ask for, so I don't know that it, I don't know that the juice is worth the squeeze, so to speak, to say, let's make it two feet narrower.
Yeah, right.
Um, so I, I think with all that in mind, I think I'm okay with this, but I'm interested to hear what the board thinks.
I agree, I think it's a challenging lot, and it's probably the, the best that you're going to get, um, given the circumstances, so I, I think it looks good.
Thank you.
No, I feel the same, initially I was put off by that seven point eight, but after looking at a broader view and realizing it's, you know, really only building up against the property of an access drive to a house behind you where, I don't even think they have a sightline to where that is, there's nothing going to be built there anyways.
Pretty long driveway, the.
Yep, and, um, improving on the front of the street, which I think is more important than the side, in my opinion, is great, so I'm, I'm all set with it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think you folks are dealing with an impressively small lot. You're like, almost exactly half of the.
The lot size.
The lot size that the, that the zone requires. Yeah, and then having the, uh, the other, the other big thing for me is having the letter of support from the neighbor on which the side, uh, yard setback that you're seeking relief from, uh, that's very important for me. So I think you're doing the best with what you got.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a challenging, you've got topography and you've got.
There's also a ledge back there too, so.
Yeah, well, I assume that the, um, retaining wall is holding up something back there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably not just earth. Yeah, well, um, all right, I don't really have an issue, um, is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? Right, if you could step right up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, everybody, I, um, I'm Denise Wall and I happen to be Renee's mother. And my husband's family goes back, um, close to a hundred years on twenty-two School Street. And then we, um, also owned eighteen School Street. And the abutting neighbor is Joy and Steve Wall at sixteen School Street, we're at eight School Street, and we're very happy to have our daughter, son-in-law, and grandson at, at ten School Street. Um, we call it the Wall compound, um, which is, you know, it's, 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 it's a, it's, um, a concept that you don't see today. And we're just really, um, happy that our daughter has, you know, dwelt there for the last seven years, we've lived, we owned the house prior to her, um, purchasing it from us, and that was one of the reasons why we wanted to buy it. It was a great opportunity for Mary Layden, if you guys are familiar with her, she was a hundred years old when she passed away. And she wanted my husband to buy the property because she grew up with the Wall family, um, that was her childhood home. And so we purchased it, and when Renee got to, um, the age where she wanted to purchase a home, it just worked out. And now they're raising, um, a child and it's wonderful. So our hopes is that they can grow, um, with this, you know, small home that they have. And, um, I agree, uh, the, the, the current location of the, um, garage is scary, uh, not only for them driving into it, um, but also for their son playing, he's, he's, he's so close to the road. Um, so hopefully, and the house is built, um, doesn't have a full foundation, so I think they have been really, um, concerned about where their kids are going to play, like on a rainy day, they don't have a basement. So that's why they're really, um, excited or hopeful that they can put on this two-car garage, so, um, that would be a safe space for the kids to play, um, winter, winter time, rainy days, whatever, because the hu, even the addition will be built on a slab or crawl space. So because of the topography and we, their backyard, Abut's our backyard, and there's a huge, it's like, um, you know, it's, it's a huge piece of ledge. I have ledge in my basement and the whole, that whole house, I think, was built on ledge, that's why it's so close to the road. So anyway, with that said, I'm hopeful that this will pass and that they can have their dream home and, um, you know, it'll be safe for, for passenger, our, our cars driving by and safer for them.
Thank you. Any questions? No, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, um, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move to close the public hearing?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Hey, let's try this.
All right, I move to approve a special permit under section four B to extend the non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot and a variance under section seven, table two, to create a new non-conformity in the side yard setback at ten School Street in the Residence B one district.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much, congratulations. All right. All right. Lastly, we have.
New business.
New business, um, we need to review and approve the dates for the twenty-twenty-five zoning board meeting, did everybody get a chance to look at those? Okay, no objections?
No objections.
Any comments? Okay, so can I, don't even need a motion, right?
Do we vote for that, or is that just?
Um, no, I don't think so.
Okay, informational.
Yeah, information. Um, on the topic of our future hearing, future, um, meetings, where do we stand on the December meeting?
Um, I haven't heard of too many potential applicants coming in, um, so I, I do have a hold for December sixteenth in this room, um, in case we need it, but I know.
But we're coming up against the, um, the advertising deadline, so that should be approaching quickly, I would think.
Yes, it is, I can double-check that, um, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, there's no issues with the dates, we've got those on the calendar.
Hi, oh, one question I guess, actually, just seeing December twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, it's a Monday, would that be school vacation week?
Oh, I don't know.
I'm just wondering if we're having this year be mid-December, if we might want to do that also, cause I think that might be the week, the week.
Yeah, that's a terrible week.
The Shrewsbury schools have off, um, which would affect me.
Okay.
Yep, selfishly, Peter has a problem, so.
Doesn't affect me yet.
Fair, it will.
Couple more years.
Very quickly, so I think that's fair, it's Monday before, you know, it's.
Yeah.
Christmas is on Thursday, yeah.
Shift that one.
Okay.
A week earlier.
Can we do that on the fifteenth?
On behalf of the public.
Thank you, Peter, that was good call.
And myself personally.
Top of things.
There, love it. About April, I know April vacation, I don't, I don't have, I don't know what the school schedule is like though, so.
We can.
We can review it.
Okay, yeah, if we could just check for school, school weeks.
Okay.
Take that under advisement. All right, um, so I think, um, we are looking for a, um, motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.